We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. If anybody, everybody would please stand for the invocation.
Let's pray. Our most precious heavenly Father, we just come to you tonight. Lord, just lay your hand on this meeting that we may do to the will of you and all the citizens, Lord. And I'll just remember the sick in the community, Lord, and heal them, Lord. And just take all evil out of this community, Lord. We ask this in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda.
I also need to amend it.
On the dam removal, we could make it under Old Business 1A, please.
A motion, is there a second?
I'll say.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Need to make a motion to amend the agenda to add a, Universal's meter is out, and we got a quote come in late yesterday. So we need to amend the agenda to get this meter fixed. Put it under 3A underwater and sewer.
Is there a second?
I'll say that.
All in favor? Let's go ahead with the consent agenda.
I had a couple of questions on the, about the consent agenda, consent invoices. The waypoint analytical environmental one, you find out, I mean, what is that? I know that's probably dealing with water, but can someone explain that, please?
That's the, that's the item we use to do all of our state park assembly.
Were they not in the budget?
Yes. It's part of the budget for, for that.
Did they send us a separate invoice, or is that just?
That is three separate invoices, and I put anything on here that's a thousand.
Okay, so that's.
So totaled up together, it was the two thousand. It is three separate invoices.
G and G Group Fusion Environmental Services?
D Greaser for compensation.
All right. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? In that case, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm making motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll say yes.
First and second, all in favor? Public comment? Is anybody here for public comment? Let's go to Old Business, Mary Joan Q.
Mayor and Commissioners, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. I'm Mary Joan Q. from Randolph County Trail Coordinator, and I have been working on some of the projects as Ramsor is along the Deep River State Trail. So I thought, might want to have a little bit of history on this for people who don't know a lot about this. The first section of the trail, I want to have an actual, that way. These are old maps. This is a, an old plan that was done for Ramsor about a few months prior.
Thank you.
And that way you can follow a little bit. There you go, we do have something here.
Thank you, thank you. Good to see you, don't ship.
So the first section, if you look at, look at this map, you'll see that in 64, and right there, just past the bridge, highway bridge, is where the first base was. And it went all the way over to where you see a bridge that's needed, it's in yellow. And that's Harlan Creek. So that, that was the first phase was to build that, and, and that, that's, that's in place. Well, there wasn't a place for the bridge at the time, I mean, money for the bridge at the time. So the second phase went from, if you look over, it's really at the bottom of Liberty Street, sort of where Brooklyn Avenue is. So it was built, that, the trail was built all the way back over to meet Harlan Creek. So you have two phases of the, of the plan done so far. And, but there's not really very good parking. The parking for Phase Two is, is really across the street from, from Town Hall. You have to go down Liberty Street. So that's why the sign is there, is no parking down there. It was envisioned that there'd be parking, but there isn't. So we, everybody was thinking, and at this time I was working, I, I've worked with Danny Shaw, Mayor Danny Shaw, and then Vicki Cottle, who has been on the Deep Rivers State Trail Task Force since 2015, so she knows all this history. That was a, a task force that's put together by the Randolph County Tourism Development Authority, because there were three towns working on this trail, and we want to make sure there was a plan. So they paid for a plan, and it was passed, it was actually finished in 2017, and the Randolph County Board of County Commissioners adopted the, adopted the plan. So it helps in giving funding, if you have it in the plan. So that, that was in the plan. But the plan was to, to really take it further across Brooklyn Avenue to the Cotton Mill and the Old Depot, and put the trail path there. Well, low and behold, Unique Places to Save came along, and Christine Pickens said, hey, what if we buy the, what we call river? If you're going down river, it is, where the right is where Linder Park is, but you don't own the land down to river. So when you go down to the river, you're trespassing. So they said, we'll buy that land, we'll get a grant, they wrote the grant, they got the money, they got, they bought that, and used it to match, in, in the town of Ramsor, they put the application together, but you all approved it to, to apply for parts of Recreation Trust Fund money, to buy the other part of, of the river left and the Cotton Mill. And, and to do that, and also to extend the trail across, if you can kind of look, it's not gonna be exactly like this, but it was gonna go across, kind of from Liberty Street all the way, across, and then around the Cotton Mill and back, and then come back into Main Street. It's about maybe quarter mile, maybe so, it just depends on how you count it. And so they put in a application, and now Ramsor has nothing in this project. Fifty thousand dollars from Representative McNeil was put in, they, the land on the other side was used for the match. So you have a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, you know, to make all this happen. Part of that was about the land, but also put these improvements in. Now, it's taken a long time, you all have been sitting here a long time, it was supposed to be finished by now. But there was problems with the, anytime you're dealing with the state, and state property, and trying to get empraiser, trying to get surveyors, and trying to do them both at the same time, it was, but I think it's done finally. We, Mayor Cottle and I met with Christine Pickens, who's done a fabulous job. And, and so now, they should have the acquisitions done in January, and be able to start the improvements. You have to figure out how much money is left, but they'll, you know, be, come to talk to you about this. And I want you to know all this, because basically, the, the people that have been working with Chris, Christine Pickens and all of this, and almost sometimes when they were putting the application together, Mayor Cottle and I wore media with her every other week, to make sure she got it right, because she had the trail not in the right place, and just to make sure that Ramsor got what they wanted to have of this. So that's what's happening, that's just start. Now, in the middle of all that, we get this, American Rivers, which is, their business is removing dams, and they can remove dams, a thousand dams, probably, in, in the US. And the idea is that, once a dam stops functioning for what purpose it was built, it was built for a mill, or it was built for hydroelectric power, and then it's not working anymore, then it's not really needed anymore, and so they're about to business of removing them. And that helps fish, that helps other wildlife, it returns the river to its natural state. And so that's the business area. Unique Places to Save is also in that business, as well as Resource Environmental Solutions, which I'll tell you about in just a second. So, American Rivers goes to the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, NOAA, and asks for a grant to, among others, four that are on Deep River. So that, they want to go from Ramsor, so it would be Franklinville all the way down to Monture. They're gonna take all the dams out, so that you, I don't even know how many miles that is, it's probably over twenty, so that, that can free up that river to be what it was before all of this happened. And, and now, like I said, they're not taking out dams that are functioning, they're taking out dams, the one at Ramsor's is breached, it's breached on, on River, River Left. And Commissioner Hackett.
Hatchet.
Hatchet, sorry. I thought it was Hackett, it's Hatchet. And we were, we went out and looked at the dam, and we could see, it's really kind of flowing. We, and we were able to meet with American Rivers, Resource Environmental Solutions, and Unique Places to Save. And we went out, we looked at it, and saw that the water's already coming out, it's coming out over on, on River Left. And one of the things that Christine's, is done, I mean, you know, it, first place, if you own a dam, you can remove it, as long as you get all the permits. And so they have the money now to do all these. Unique Places to Save is involved in the one at High Falls, they're the contractor to remove that one, but RES is the one that contracted to remove this. But they're all working together, all three of them are working together for these four dams. So Christine has a lot of experience in this, and so she has been aligning out the concerns that Ramsor has, to make sure that those are all addressed. And that's what American Rivers is all about. I went to, I was able to go to a dam removal workshop a couple of weeks ago, and that's all they talked about, is how to work with the community, sure they have the right to take that dam out, but they don't want to do that. They want to make it right, make it what the community wants it to look like, because it's a centerpiece place, you know, piece for most communities, to have, you know, a, a, a river, I mean, if they have a river, they want, they want it to look nice. And Commissioner Hackett and I, we saw that you took that out, it's lovely, isn't it? Kind of an ugly dam, and it's, it doesn't have clearly any purpose. It's also unsafe. If you're kayaking, or even you're just going out there fishing on top, you know, on the top of the dam, I mean, it's very unsafe for people that want, want to use the river, or want to paddle down the river, even if you're gonna try to portage around over on the, on the right side. So that's one of the reasons they take them out, and it's, it's not good for water quality, quite frankly. The water gets, you know, not in this particular dam, it's not that high, it's not that deep, the water's not that deep. But the other thing that we want to make sure is that we can do paddling, you know, so if they do take, when they take the dam out, and they will, they've said they, they were, Commissioner Hackett, right in the face and said, we're taking this out in two years. They had, and I said, they have the money. But they want to make sure, you know, things like leaving a fishing deck, or making sure there's a kayak channel, and, and, and river access. Now, instead of put a portage over there on the Linder Park side, we put a river access, and we can, you know, you can float all the way from Franklinville to Ramsor, and then you can keep on going all the way down to Coleridge. So I'm, I'm telling you all these things, because I, this is enhancing your project. And one of the things that, and I, I think, you know, Commissioner, she, we sat there, and one of the things that they need in order to make this project work is that you have to, that the state wants in the deed, that if the dam is not removed in ten years, that the town of Ramsor has the option to come in and remove it. The owner, the owner has to let, let you do that. So, and that's very unlikely, because I think in two years, you're gonna have, you know, and it may even happen next fall. They like to do the dam removals in September, because that's where the rivers flow. So this is gonna enhance your, their project, which is good. And then if you had all the improvements in. And this year, you know, it's been the year of the trail, and the Great Trail State Coalition has been working to get money. We've got some money for state trails, but we don't have money for the, for trash in state. They passed a Great Trail State Program, twenty-five million dollars for all types of trail, paved, natural surface, paddle, equestrian, bike, whatever type of trail you want. There's twelve and a half million dollars each year of this biennium, and so, the, the max is five hundred thousand dollars. Now, the other resource we've had is the Recreation of Trail Program, and it only gives you a hundred thousand dollars. So that's, now, that's not gonna address the Harlan Creek Bridge, but this will. So I'm suggesting that you consider applying for the Great Trail State Program funds, five hundred thousand dollars, when it, as it is now, the Coalition is working with state parks on kind of the details behind it, you know, everything, it, it, any, the eligible, you can be a government, or even a nonprofit to get this money. But they're trying to figure out the criteria, and the selection criteria, and the rankings, and how it all's gonna work. So I don't think you'll be able to apply for it until probably spring, and not get the money that probably be due, I don't know, the summer, the fall. They don't, they haven't worked out all that. But I'm suggesting that now that you have all this going on downstream and upstream, that you should go for the Harlan Creek Bridge. The other thing I want to tell you, is exciting news. The number one priority in the conceptual plan for the Deep River State Trail was connecting Franklinville to Ramsor. Franklinville has two and a half miles, and the, the first phase of Ramsor's has three quarters of a mile of will. So I want to tell you that on December seventh at two o'clock, there is going to be a groundbreaking for that bridge. We finally have that bridge, costs a little, a lot more than we thought it would, about three hundred thousand dollars over budget, but we have the money from the county's account, and so we're gonna do a, a ribbon cutting there. And that bridge should be complete in about six months. So next, late spring and summer, people are gonna be coming here to Ramsor, because that's the closest to the, and, and you can see it on this map, the way is on the left, you'll see that Sandy Creek, and it has that, the old Tressa Crossing, this is the alternate crossing, number eight. That's the way it's gonna go. And Mayor Proton, Laura and I actually walked out there, didn't we? And we looked across there, and we could see where it was gonna be. So now you're, now it's even more, you're gonna have three, almost three and a half miles connected, it's even more important to get the Harlan Creek Bridge, to connect you to the, to the other part, which is gonna be around three, three, yeah, point seven five miles. So this is very exciting news, I just want to kind of help you put this puzzle together, and see how exciting this is. And, and what does Ramsor have to do? Really, nothing. All these things are gonna be done without your money. So I just want to tell you how important I think that is, and, and, and really to compliment Mayor Cottle for being on top of this since 2015, and, and working to get Ramsor their, their share of, of, of the money for these trails, and for these, because you've got a lot of development coming your way, a lot of, with work speed, and even more, you know, maybe when I have houses in, so, I'm just really pleased that you've got all this ready, so when that, all those people start moving here, you're gonna have some real limited needs for them to afford. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, it's a question.
Sure.
Is American Rivers gonna deal with the environmental, you know, all the, all the requirements in the Dam Safety Act?
Yes, they are.
Will they put something in writing, since they've gotten this money? So the town of Ramsor is not, ten years from now, faced with the cost of removing the dam?
Well, that's only the option, but the town of Ramsor never has to move, remove the dam. It's an option.
Yeah, but if they don't do it, they're gonna have to comply with the dam safety?
No.
The state, the state will make them.
Well, the owner will still own it. Not the town of Ramsor. Town of Ramsor's never gonna own it.
Sure, I thought they were gonna transfer the land part of.
They were at one time.
They were at one time.
Okay.
Commissioner, you're exactly right, at one time they were, but the owner changed his mind.
Well, see, we, we.
He's given the rights to.
We, we hadn't been advised of that.
We, we'll say.
Yeah, we did.
Well, he's already signed up with American Rivers.
Okay.
Good.
So you'll never, I mean, Town of Rivers is never gonna see that.
That was a big concern there, but that's very expensive.
Well, it is, and they got the money, and, you know, you just don't get the money from NOAA, without having done some preliminary studies. And they've done preliminary studies, I've seen what they've done on, on High Falls Dam, they looked at how much sediment is on the, you know, the back end of it.
This is a regional project, too, so that helps, if it goes down through several communities.
Right. And see, Ramsor would be the, the furthest upstream. So they're starting with High Falls, because that will give them a bunch of, you know, if they can get High Falls out.
Right.
But they have, apparently they have agreements with all the owners, and, so they, they definitely have to do the environment, there's a lot of permits you have to get, but NOAA wouldn't be giving them the money without it. And these people have experience, you know, American Rivers, RES, Unique Places to Save, this is not their first rodeo.
Right.
And they know all, how to do all this, and we have a very good contact, but she had the meeting, Lizzie, so she's gonna be our contact person. So they've got it all lined up, and their main thing is, they want to talk to the community and make sure that, that the community agrees with how they're gonna do it, and what's gonna be left, and how it looks. So I think that's very important, because they could just remove it. But that's not, that's not what they, that's not in their mission statement. Their mission statement is to work with communities and get what they want, and it may induce a restoration on both banks. There's lots of things that, that, you know, the town of Ramsor can ask for, and see if we can't get them. And I, like I said, I'll continue to be helping you any way I can, and I just want you to be aware of this, because, like I said, Mayor, Mayor Cottle's, has been all along this journey, and it heavily involves. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, did y'all have any questions?
No, but if you wouldn't mind hanging around just one minute while we go through the next item, which is the.
Okay, we need to take care of the letter of understanding, and I'm gonna read you a quick synopsis of what's going on, so everybody understands. Letter of understanding pertaining to the right to remove the dam. Currently, the landowner is going to continue to own the dam structure, but will be selling the land to Unique Places to Save, as agreed. The landowner will transfer the rights to remove the dam structure to Resource Environmental Solutions, which is a project partner on the American Rivers project, that includes a proposal to remove Ramsor's dam. Given adequate study and permitting, RES has drafted a letter that states the right to remove the dam structure will be transferred to the town at no cost if, by the town, if desired by the town, if the dam is not removed within the next ten years. So Mayor, I wish you'd pick up on that. The letter of intent is what they're needing for us to get signed, so they can go forward.
Letter of understanding.
Letter of understanding, yes.
Did you print that as well?
I have.
Yeah.
Yes, it's there.
Okay, and this was presented to the board prior, I think, Mr. Wilhite, you had some concerns with the language?
Yeah, I think one, one thing we probably need to govern, just to add to it, I spoke to Christine about that, she didn't see it to be a problem, put in there to be governed by North Carolina law, add, add a sense to the fact that, you know, amended, some, by consent of both parties, it could be amended. And I guess the only question is, most contracts do have a termination clause or something, but I'm not quite sure how your arrangement with the, with the environmental company, you got American Rivers involved in all this grant money, you certainly want them to use those funds to assist the owner of the bridge.
They have ten years, is that correct?
Yeah.
They have ten years.
He, he stated, Mary Joan stated, they were hoping to have it done the next two, maybe next fall.
Well, that's what Peter Lab from American Rivers, the president of American Rivers is.
Ms. Pickens, that it wouldn't be a problem to add something about governed by North Carolina law, or, but put in there that it could amended by consent of the parties. We generally put some kind of termination clause in there, I don't know what the conditions that would be with them. I guess if the company went bankrupt. I guess if the company went bankrupt, we'd have a problem with them holding them to the letter of this agreement.
Not necessarily since Unique Places to Save will continue to own it.
Well, we don't we don't own the bridge.
The dam.
The owner.
The dam.
Right.
So I mean, it's an option. You're really, they're giving you an option that if it's not removed in ten years, you can remove it. But that doesn't mean you you have to.
Correct. Right. I think you just add those two that, you know, amended by consent and governed by North Carolina law. I think you'll be good. He said that wouldn't be a problem to amend that. I can send something to him.
Yeah, but he's saying to put it under North Carolina law.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendments.
Okay. Such as I'll do is say approve it with the additional amendments of adding those two paragraphs of the amended by consent or governed by North Carolina law.
Okay.
Okay, fine.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we approved the letter of understanding with the modifications being made to make sure that it's governed by North Carolina law.
Is that good?
And the amendment clause.
Amendment, it was what's that?
An amendment clause.
Amendment clause.
We can always change it with everybody consent.
So there's two amendments we're looking at, that it's been governed by North Carolina law, and we can implement an amendment clause with the agreement of both parties. Is there a second to that motion?
I'm at the second.
First and second, is there any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Mayor Jones, thank you. And I would like to say that Mary Jones has kept up on all the different grant opportunities and been able to keep everybody in the loop from the state and federal level all the way down to our little municipal government. So I appreciate that. Okay, we're going to move on to the next item, surplus items.
We have seven stockings, twenty-one Christmas trees, thirteen snowflakes and two angels. I'd like to make a motion, we go ahead and surplus these on gov deals.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? New business? Water and sewer?
All right. So the first invoice is from, we saw that a private supply company is supported by a meter from. Talking to Diane, we got about thirty meters, the residential meters that are either not copper than reading, not reading. So, you know, she's having, we're not able to actively charge these customers in any of your place. So thirty of those meters would be eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
I think he's asking that the board approve that?
Yeah.
Carol, is that in budget?
It should be in capital out later.
There's 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 some money in there for capital out equipment, which will cover stuff like this. But I mean, you know, without them, we're not, we're not able to build these.
What kind of warranties on them?
Warranties are out.
On the new ones we buy, we have no warranty. So if we buy them, put them in, they don't work, there's no warranty.
Uh, I'm sure we can turn them like right off like that. You know, you get three years down the road and batteries out on them.
Okay. We're losing money, so I make a motion, we go ahead and purchase these meters.
Is there a second?
I'll second. I mean, we got to have.
So some material warranties are limited to that of the manufacturer only. Any further discussion? All in favor?
The next one is another meter. The universal help meter, which is a three inch meter, completely went out. I'm assuming the batteries died in it. So anyway, it didn't even, that is actually, the batteries were guaranteed for ten years or nine years. So anyway, have no, that's a, that's a big usage meter, the three inch meter. You know, we have no, no way to read that meter right now. So to replace that one, it's two thousand one hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents. So I'd like to get that one approved also.
Are you going to try and run it under the guarantee if we're in?
Yeah, I will see, I'm gonna see what they'll say. This was something when we read meters last, at the end of last week, it came to our attention that it was out when we read meters. So it was kind of, I got, I went ahead and got a quote on it to get approval, just in case. Try to get it in before the next meter read.
Do you have a motion on that?
I must have gone in and approved the invoice for the universal help pair meter.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right. And the last invoice from Charles Underwood is for a return pump that went out at the wastewater plant. Terry called me, said the return pump went out. He actually ended up having to call Randy Cheek and get him to come out and pump the pit out until Underwood was able to come up and get, get the pump repaired. The cost of that was eleven thousand seven hundred and nine dollars and sixty-three cents. This is kind of one of those things, you know, if you don't do it, you're going to have sewer running all over the ground.
Is there a motion on that?
Make a motion after the invoice was eleven thousand seven hundred and nine dollars and sixty-three cents. I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Mr. Langley?
I ain't a bigger pudding, I believe. Okay, so first off, I'm Richard Langley, two thirty-seven Coleridge Road. Never been in front of a board. I listen to Newton and a lot of public speakers, other people are. So indulge me, bear with me, give me some guidance. We, we bought a property, which I saved the address. All that Mandy and I was wanting to do is just improve the corner lot. Been vacant for fifteen years, overgrown. All we're trying to do is improve Ramsor, have, you know, a house that, you know, visually, aesthetically, everything was appealing, that went along with Ramsor. Mandy has been very upset about me being here today and everything that led up from the time, because it was purchased in September of twenty-two. I tried to work with Ramsor, which I won't go into the exact details. I don't want to get off tracks. But what has happened is not what we wanted. So let me just start off by giving you guys some pictures you can look at, give you a little information, and I'll go through the list. And I will also say, we tried to do our due diligence. We tried to reach out to different people. Anytime we had a situation, we've reached out to a board member, had no reply back, reached out to the mayor, I seen J.C., introduced myself to him and was hoping to resolve each. Yeah, I was on this calendar, I guess you call it here. So this is the way I get to address everybody. And so that being said, do I walk up and hand these out or?
You can make this spin.
Okay. I only printed off five, and I didn't know what type of video equipment you guys had. I didn't do a fast drive or anything of that nature. And so I'm going to give a very, a very simple visual too here, just so you can understand. So I'm going to sit this here. And what this represents is the sidewalk that we have to drive over from the street to enter into the driveway. So this here measures out a little under, it's right around two and a half inches. And that is what the primary drive, we were having to drive over. So let me put on some glasses and I guess go to read. Okay, so a little bit about me. As I say, my name, Richard Langley, two thirty-seven Coleridge Road. I'll give you some information. Operate three full-time businesses with Mandy, which were fifty percent ownership in. I have two other full-time businesses, I'm a hundred percent. The reason I'm going to give this information is give you guys a little bit of history on me. Otherwise, you don't know, know any details. And so I've always owned three to six full-time businesses. I stay very busy. I've done this for thirty-four plus years. Mandy's background is the corporate sector. She's, she's employed a hundred plus employees under her management and payroll. This being said, we understand business. We understand how business works, how it should be conducted and ran on a day-to-day basis. My electrical contracting business, I own and operate for eighteen years. I did work with Carolinas, bordering states. I've dealt with city, county inspectors, inspections department, North Carolina Electrical Guidelines. It says in my technology company, I did work all over the United States. We had five SAG international locations. I dealt with anything from brand name companies to larger government, financial sector, medical, pro, sports arenas. In in those locations, I dealt with decision makers and cities, project managers, inspections, permits, et cetera. I'm very familiar with how business is supposed to be conducted in a professional manner. I've never had, never had law enforcement called on me for any of my employees or my companies. I've never had a misdemeanor for our felony, for me or Mandy to want. We try to conduct business the way business should be done. So I'm going to stop for a second. How long do I get to speak? Because I'm going to, I got to think, consolidate as much as I could. I worked up two AM last night to be able to come in and give you guys an accurate read, the best I could.
There's not a time limit on how long you can speak, but we ask that you just be conscious of time.
Yes, I, that's why I was, I'm going to try to rapidly go through. But you guys have to understand a full picture. Because we're going back a year now. There's now a lot of events that's taken place in that year rather than, you know, a very short time span. So for me to accurately give you that, it'll take me, we'll say ten minutes, but I'm going to go through as fast as I can. There's a, and this is more or less just the, a large overview. So I've never met the town clerk before August eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. I met Debbie when she signed the new, when new service was signed by her on nine twelve, twenty twenty-two. I saw Diane for the first time on August eighteenth. Didn't recognize her as the old town clerk until later. I met Chief Presley on October eighteenth. Let me start off by commending Chief Presley for helping bring clarity to my case on October eighteenth. After October eighteenth, I was gaining information for my case to prove my innocence because law enforcement had been called on me. I had been fined. I've been penalized like I was a thief out here stealing water. So Diane assisted me with documents I requested on October eighteenth and twentieth. Diane, your prior town clerk, was professional, prompt and on point. She did not struggle to work for me or I working with her. I like the way that she does her job and and her conversation and communication that she had with me. This is how a town clerk is supposed to respond to residents. Jason, Public Works, I had no issues with Jason. We've had a lot of communications. He was new coming in. I understand there's going to be, you know, he has played probably four. The only thing that I can say about with Jason was the lack of handling the leaks in a timely manner, which confused, which added to this confusion. For the evidence I have obtained, and I have had to work many, many hours out of my busy schedule to give this information to you guys. Actually, we're not, it's, there's just a lot that had to go into it. Simply put, I shouldn't be here. This should have been easily handled by town hall and done. So, let's see. Simply put, I said I shouldn't be here. Miss information given, given along with monetary fines issued for me with no valid reason. No communication between Public Works and Town Hall was the breakdown that caused the issue. Furthermore, in business, town clerk should have seen issues and addressed them before they escalated to me standing here. I'm still confused why Ramsor cannot handle business before I have to be involved. Events that led up to August eighteenth. New service was taken out on nine twelve, twenty-two. Yes, let me start over. New, new service was taken out on nine twelve, twenty twenty-two by Debbie. New service request was filled out. I was in the system partially, meaning that the correct name, correct house address, but other information was not. And this was discovered later on October eighteenth. So service was taken out on nine twelve, but it wasn't discovered until August eighteenth. After service was established on September twelve, twenty twenty-two, I immediately discovered a water leak between the emergency cutoff and the meter. I reached out to Town Hall Public Works Manager to contact me. There was no reply. I was persistent. After two months later, McIntosh and Mark Fields came out. I notified him of the leak and showed him the two established driveway entrances where the sidewalks had been poured up. That is the depth we were having to drive over. So you can imagine with a car going over that each time. So there is, this property was originally two lots. That's why there's two main drives. They were established. After seeing the leak, McIntosh said to me, I'll never forget this. He said, what do you want me to do? I responded back, fix the leak and make the drives accessible. He then went on to explain the sidewalk would have to be cut up along with traffic being stopped. I responded, what do you want me to do? He said that he could not get to it and asked if we were going to be living there anytime soon. I said, no, I'm restoring it. It will be a little while. He said, just cut it off. And he said, cut it off and on as needed until he could get to it. After trying to contact him over the next few months, I was informed he had resigned and Jason was the new manager. I reached out to Jason, the phone call was followed up by text that I have records of starting on March thirteenth about fixing the water leak and the driveway entrance problem. The leak was, the leak would fill up the meter box in a short time and cause an issue with new fixtures, tubs, plumbing, et cetera, and contaminating the water from the supply due to what is called an venturi effect. And that is why I printed off, that is one of the many pictures I sent to Jason showing the, the issue. And it was not addressed until the date on there, which I'll get to that in a moment. I've been plumbing for thirty-four years. I followed up with March thirtieth with a text showing a picture of the water covering the meter within seven to ten minutes after being cut off. March thirtieth, the text, April fifth, the text showing the meter half full of water within forty-five minutes. May fourth, another picture showing the leak. He responded that he was understaffed and he would get on the schedule in June. A repair was done to the water, which reduced the leak, but it's still wet in the ground in the bottom of the meter box. So at that timeline, there was a major challenge. Until then, this is what I, we had to deal with. Anytime we wanted water, anytime we wanted to test anything, we had a meter that would fill up, fill up the meter box. So that is why it was having to be cut off at the main disconnect. Because the leak was in between the, it was actually two parts. It was leaking from the packing of the meter from what, I mean, of the cutoff, from what Jason told me, and if there's a leak in between it and the meter. Having a leak there, it wasn't a rupture. If it had a rupture, water comes out of the ground, you know, you got a main problem. If you have a very small leak, pressure from the water will actually just leak out and if it's in-ground location, it fills that cavity with water. Well, then where the venturi effect comes in, EPA has this statement in the letter. I've got information on that as well. What happens is what you done, what I didn't want to have happen was the meter to, it would be cut off, to be left on. It would fill up above the leak. So then whenever water is used in the house, just like you suck in a straw, it's going to pull from that leak and pulling contaminants, roadside contaminants, all the rust. You got to see the picture. So that's why it was being cut off. It was kept it down below the leak. And we were using just minimum to test, cut it on, then cut it back off. We did not want it fill up above the leak. So continuing on. Let me catch back up on my files. So June was fixed, or it was ninety percent. So September, so from September twenty twenty-two, October, November, December, January, February, March, April, May, June. I just counted off. We're driving over that and we're dealing with that. While we're doing, you know, remodel. I understand everybody's busy. I mean, I've been a contractor, as I'm stating, for a long, long time. I understand sometimes things just take a while to get to, smaller city, et cetera. So that's, that was me being an understanding for it. I go on to say, this is the reason that I was cutting off the water in the meter box every time I needed to test. I was told it was okay to do this by McIntosh and then Jason U. as well. I have texts that proves that. I mean, this isn't really anything against. I mean, this isn't really anything against Jason. It's just, he couldn't get to it. And in my eyes, it was way of everybody moving forward with the business at hand. Me getting remodeling done, city Ramster handling whatever until they could get to it. That's how I view it.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Did uh, did Jason not tell you that it wasn't costing you anything except meter running if it says it was broke?
Ma'am, that, what I'm referring to now, that that's a later issue. What I'm referring to now is the leak that was present was causing contaminants to come into the water system from that leak.
And how much damage was caused to your appliances and your water heater?
None, because I kept it cut off. I mean, I did my due diligence. Okay, I I understand this, you know, so.
So it was your actions that kept it from getting damaged?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that, yes. Okay, and then also in June, the primary um, drive was fixed. It was cut out, that hump big area was cut out. It was then beveled down, new concrete was put in, great. But the secondary drive, which is a primary established drive as well, that's not been addressed. But I'll continue on and I was just making note of that since we're speaking about it. So as I was saying, how do you guys feel having to drive over that every time you went in and out of entrance of your home? And then I go on saying about the secondary drive, uh, has still not been fixed. And in the October eighteenth conversation at Town Hall with Jason, he didn't know, well, it's not on the schedule. You guys have to approve it evidently and so, um, uh, that's where that is. And the reason that the secondary drive, and some people might not know this, the fences actually has a sixteen-foot open, you know, open up, that way I can come in, because the other drive, uh, there's a lot of traffic on that road. Come in with a trailer, the move yards, the landscape, et cetera. It's just not safe from office. Much easier, open up the gate, drive in, handle things, and then then exit. Okay, so now we're moving on to paying for water. I went in every month before the bill was due and I paid the bill that, uh, the amount that was in the system. Note, I, Richard Langley, was in Ramster's system. I would ask Debbie, because she was the first before she got her own office, I asked Debbie every month what the usage was. I kept my memory, running memory of what the usage was, so I I knew a median, a baseline. I did this each month from September twenty-second all the way through August, um, August twenty-third. I, even though I never received the bill, this is gonna come later. I knew that I owed for service and I paid for service. I mean, I've been CFO for all my companies. I understand, you know, accounting, et cetera. I mean, I got an eight-hundred credit score. The reason I'm telling you that is because I've had it for decades. I pay my bills on time.
Did you let them know that you wasn't getting your bills after you didn't get them the first couple of months or something?
That's a great question, ma'am. So when I signed up for service, as I stated, I was very busy too. And it just never dawned to me because I knew, I I had asked, I asked questions. I'd ask, when is the bill due? So I would go in and I would just ask, what is my usage? They didn't pick up on it and I didn't think anything of it because I'm going for service. Uh, I I'd ask, what is my usage? And I caught when there was an increase in, you know, sewer cost or trash pickup or whatever, and we moved on with that. But no, ma'am, hindsight, I should have, but I was paying for a service. So I didn't see, and I knew the amount of the service and I agreed with that amount, so I didn't see it.
How much was the amount? How much is the amount of your service each month approximately?
At that time, it was running around forty-some dollars when it started. Forty-five is a good baseline I use. So then if it went up from that, which it the, I I'm easy to lose tracks. I barely stayed back with my uh, my uh, information here. And but that will be discussed and hopefully I answered your question. As I said, I just kept a memory of this, uh, that went on from September twenty-second to August twenty-third and never received a bill. I knew that I owed for service, I paid for service, and let me jump back up. Okay, so after Debbie, Debbie moved out of her office, I started dealing with Brandy and New High, same way. I asked Brandy the same questions and this went on for a few months. Uh, I did this every month until August second, twenty twenty-three. I went in and it was abnormally high. I asked Brandy why it was high, the amount of usage, and I have that information, but we'll come back to that. And so then she called Debbie out to assist her, why it was so high. I explained to Debbie that the meter had gone bad. I had noticed that because I'm going in to cut service on and off. Not trying to steal water, I let you guys know this bad. So uh, I I immediately, my phone is broken, so the earpiece on it, so everything I do, I do on speakerphone. So and that helped out in this case. So I told Debbie that the meter had gone bad. I called Jason at twelve oh five uh, PM in front of Debbie and Brandy. I explained to him what was going on, told him the usage was high. Plus, I informed him that the meter not working. He said he would investigate, uh, he would, he would investigate. And I had this on speaker so Debbie could hear. After I ended the call um, with Jason, I asked Debbie, I said, what do you want me to do? Her reply back, wait until he investigates. And I said, if there's, I said, that's okay, but I said, if I'm gonna get penalized any, I wanna pay. She said, no, just wait. So I left Town Hall and never heard anything, no voicemail, email, letter, nothing. I've had Diane pull all my records and paperwork from the town. There is no record of any letter being sent to me, no communication sent to me from August second to August eighteenth. So now August eighteenth is a key, is a key date. August eighteenth, I was installing an HVAC system and upstairs, hundred and thirty-plus degrees. I was calling, I need to come outside. Upon coming outside, I saw Coleridge Road was blocked off by Ramster Police, which was Captain Jessup that I later got to speak with and know. And then four vehicles links back was Jason and Mark in the uh, Public Works truck, had the flashers on. I asked what was going on. I was informed that a disconnect had occurred. I had cut water back on. I had never had law enforcement call on me before. I said, you're making me out to be a criminal, which is not the case. I explained to Jason and the officer my side of the story. Jason knew that I had been going in, cutting it on and off, uh, because of the leak. I mentioned many times, all of this, which is all on body cam, which I viewed. I reminded Jason about the call at Town Hall where Debbie, where he was prepped or where he commented and Debbie heard. He made me comment that he was looking and giving adjustment possibly. I told him that I would go to Town Hall, speak with Debbie, and sort this out. It's just a simple misunderstanding, that's all I took it for. Upon arriving at Town Hall, nothing had prepared me for what took place next. I had never met town clerk before this day, had any, any interaction with her before this day in any form. Your town clerk met me in a very heavy authority. And I was given a letter of disconnect along with my first water bill, which I, which I seen for the first time for two thirty-seven Coleridge Road. I was told of late penalties that incurred from the first late fee of twenty dollars, fifty dollars, and a hundred and fifty dollars for tampering. I told her I had not tampered with the meter uh, in any way. And by North Carolina statute, tampering is when you're trying to throw utilities. You're going in, you're modifying it, bypassing it, doing something. That is the guidelines that I read and it's stated in that. I did not tamper. I was using emergency disconnect for the reasons I've already stated. Before handing, handing me the papers, which is located on the back wall. As she was walking to get papers, she said, Richard, you've been warned many times. That was a red flag going off, many times. I'm not being warned any, but I didn't say anything. I had never met her before this day, nor had I been warned verbally or written. Then she handed me over the paperwork. And this I found very odd, so I'm seeing I have this in there, my first water utility card, whatever it is. Who can't spell Coleridge? I mean, whoever put this in the system can't spell. And I just thought, why is, you know, and so basically, that that struck me as odd because, one, she's handing, handing this to me. And if I was going to address somebody in the way she's addressing me, I definitely make sure everything is in order with all my paperwork. That's very small. But from my experience in business, people that let small things graze by, they'll let larger things, which we'll see as this progresses on. Next, I asked to speak to Debbie because this would just be a simple mistake, as I I was thinking. Your town clerk goes into Debbie's office, she's in there shortly, I'm expecting Debbie to come out and this will just be resolved, all parties present. The town clerk comes back out and she said that Debbie, uh, she said that Debbie told me to bring my receipts for any damages and a possible refund of the issue. I don't own anything in the, the meter base. I've been doing my due diligence and protecting my, you know, from anything coming in. What receipts am I gonna provide? I didn't comment on that, that struck me as odd. And then Debbie not coming out, seeing me either, I struck that as odd, that the town clerk is speaking for, but it's her office. So, um. So as I say, the town clerk said, bring my receipts in. Like I said, what receipts am I supposed to have? Was it from a payment that I was told not to pay? I I don't know what that was meant to or even referenced to. Did they forget? I mean, honestly, I believe someone forgot.
About what, that you made payments?
No, forgot, ma'am, about being told, wait till the investigation of Jason going out to see. And that's what you were asking about, which this comes out, about the leak, the leak being, because the usage was high. So with the usage being high, abnormally high, like going from two hundred gallons to thirty-five hundred gallons. Yes, there was more water used, but I don't know how large a thousand gallon tank is, a three thousand gallon tank, et cetera. That's a lot of water. And the meter going bad at that same timeframe or shortly thereafter raised suspicions. But I understand the meters you gotta use, they have a very good success rate. I mean, I'm not gonna try to feed a dead horse on that. But something occurred from two hundred gallons to thirty-five. And then after the new meter's been put in, it's dropped way back down to in the normal range. So the, what I think you're asking for, the, the leak, Jason uh, went out, he evaluated the leak and it it wasn't deemed to be uh, on the town's part. I think that's what you were asking for, right, ma'am? Okay. Um, and which more, that comes in the detail here shortly. I I even made on the comment when I'm standing there in Town Hall, um, a smart man knows when to save when, because I already seen this was not the way that I expected it to be. And then I said, let me pay what I owe, past and current. It wasn't an issue about paying, it was an issue about not being informed of the decision from Jason going out. Know, I know that I paid way more than the normal because it took them two transactions to run the merchant speeds. They couldn't run it on one, so I paid for two merchant speeds. Note, Officer Jessup had arrived prior and he was in Town Hall, has arms crossed, sitting at like Brandy says, which I have since viewed with chief precisely. August eighteenth, I left Town Hall and made some clarification on the details concerning the incident. I made two calls back to the town clerk. One call was at four thirty-eight PM, one was at four forty PM. The first call was clarify why I had never received any warnings, I had not received anything about a disconnect taking place, nothing from the town clerk office. It was on this call that I was told that the only address on file was two thirty, the only address that was on file for my account was two thirty-seven Coleridge Road. Okay, so this explains why I hadn't got anything, but there was nothing sent. There's, and because I had all that, that Diane had pulled.
Did you get mail at two thirty-seven Coleridge Road?
No, ma'am. No, all, all the mail. See, when I went in and filled out the.
Did you put your post office box there or the, or the mailing address on the, on the information you filled out to Town Hall for that address?
Great question, yes, ma'am, I did. On that new service request, and it even goes on the Oliver Street location, when I took out service, I, we don't get anything there. I mean, and and I've learned how the post office works. This is only a PO uh, box hub. Everything's delivered through Ashborough, which was not what town clerk said to me, which comes later.
What you mean, I mean?
I don't mean to be confusing.
No, you're not confusing. I know everything at Lees Ramster, because Ashborough's the main hub. If you put a letter in Ramster today, it'll go to Ashborough before it comes back to you here in Ramster.
You're exactly right. So to answer you thoroughly, I'm gonna have to.
Do you have a, do you have a copy of your service request?
Okay, I I'm not got, I don't, I've never kept a service request or anything. So when I had Diane pull anything they had on me, because I wanted to see what, what is that?
Diane, is, is there a copy?
Did not find the service request when he went in in twenty-two. Because I I found one for Liberty Street for twenty twenty and Oliver Street for twenty twenty, but I could not find anything for Coleridge Road at that time.
And that's what we asked him for proof of paying his hundred and fifty-dollar deposit and that could never be presented. The service was not actually signed up correctly until October eighteenth, twenty-three.
Was the service on Liberty Street set up correctly and was the service on Oliver Street set up correctly? Both of those, this is the missing piece of information.
We do not have that, Mr. Strang. Uh, we found everything but that one.
So this is my question to town clerk and to the board. And and I stated, it's on body cam when I was in there and all this was taking place.
When you say body cam, you say you mean Officer Jessup's?
And I was, and Chief Presley. Yes, I viewed both of those because I went before I came here. I even went in today, I requested Chief Presley. And see, I've got real problems. I'm used to dealing with tenants, there's always discrepancies. I'm used, law enforcement is my friend. I mean, I I treat them as such and it it is, it works both ways. So I viewed the body cam of both of, uh, those gentlemen today. I I got to it a little late, but I got done about five thirty or, well, four thirty-eight to be exact. And I went home six hours after here. But my question here is, there, and it was the day, this board had a meeting, and I'm gonna get off track here. But you guys had a meeting on October seventeenth to disconnect service with us. The reason it was deemed disconnect was I didn't know. So on the eighteenth, the morning of the eighteenth, eight-thirty, me and Mandy's conducting work, she gets a call from town clerk stating that service is gonna be disconnected, she's gotta come in and sign up in her name. There's a little bit of information I'm getting ahead of here.
The property is in her name?
The property is in her name, ma'am. Yes, like I said, we've got three businesses and sometimes, and this one isn't a LLC, so sometimes we just do that. I can prove, you know, just like with my uh, tenants, if they're gonna take out utilities, I have to provide them documentation stating that I'm the owner of the property and that they are gonna be a tenant, then they get service in their name. So when I went in on October, I went in on October uh, eighteen, we had to go. It got escalated. I, we're not gonna have water, have any service, so we had to go in. So going in uh, on that date, I was trying to obtain information. That's all I was trying to, I was trying to obtain information from the town clerk because you guys had made a ruling, I didn't know why. So in doing that, it was very difficult. She was stating that I was wanting to argue with her. I was just trying to gain information. My information, like I told you, I said, I can provide documentation. I am, you know, fifty percent on it. I can do anything you need, you just tell me why and so service can continue on. She said that I was arguing with her and then, you know, two different times. And then after the second time, I do not appreciate being in an office and the person that's over that office is not conducting and responding to me. I did not use profanity, I did not yell. I mean, I was trying to conduct business. She then uh, pushes the panic button. That's only in life-threatening situations. And then that's when she, Jessup comes and other things. But let's rewind back, because I'm gonna get off track. It's easy for me to do. How, I'm in, I was in Ramster's system, Richard Langley, two thirty-seven Coleridge Road. Chief Presley saw that when he came down, was asking questions. How did I get in your system? And I said that in front of her prior to her pushing the panic button. How am I in your system? I can't order uh, garbage pickup. I can't, and I'm coming in being honest, coming in paying a utility bill. I'm not even getting billed for, but how am I in your system? That is my question. You see, because the information I asked about, it was told by me at that office, there is no uh, new customer signup. There's no form. I said, where did it go? Where did it go? How did I get in your system? I can't put it in there, so that's my question, so.
Mr. Langley, do you, do you have documentation tonight of the water bills that you paid for two thirty- Mr. Langley, do you, do you have documentation tonight of the water bills that you paid for two thirty-seven? Do you have it with you this evening?
I do have it because in, on, on October twentieth, but Diane was gracious enough, she went back seat because I had asked the town clerk and the phone call that I had with her, I'm like, because she, she told me that's where it was identified, that the correct mailing address, forty-six thirty-three, which has been mine for many, many years, Joey knows this, she lived outside him for ten years, that was not in the system, the only one in there was two thirty-seven. So the only thing that I can figure out happened was, I went in, I filled out the new service form, filled it out, I got put in the system, how else can I get put in the system? That form got lost, I don't know what, it's not, it wasn't under my control. And that leads to that issue. Then we got, still to go back to the August eighteenth, the disconnect issue and go through that. So what questions do we have on, on this?
Do you have your receipt from where you paid the deposit back in twenty-two?
That's a great question, Jacey, because you asked that question to Chief Presley in the phone call because things weren't adding up when he went in. The way I gather information and, or handle any projects, I gather the easiest information I can grab and coming, as I've stated guys, I'm very busy. This here, the monetary amount that I was fined is nothing in the dollar. I mean, it is a hundred and fifty, fifty and twenty. But the whole core issue is the way it was made for me, appeared for me to look. I was deemed as a criminal. I mean, I was deemed as I'm stealing water, nothing is tampering, nothing is further than the truth.
The tampering is, well, those meters belong to the town, you're not allowed to cut them on and off. I don't care if Jim did tell you to cut them on or off, that was a mistake that he made, and he probably knew he made it. Because you're not, I'm not allowed, if my water was messed up and Jason came and told, well, if you need to cut it out, cut it out, I'm not touching it.
Well, see ma'am, this is a difference.
No, it ain't a difference. If it was me, me or you or anybody else out here.
Okay, I think what he's saying is he was given direction from a member representing the town. He's very familiar with how to do it, I understand what you're saying.
Wasn't supposed to do it though.
I, I was never notified of that ma'am, I was never notified.
Because he's a contractor and because he is familiar with how this operates, he knew what to do, he had the tools to do it. Is anything damaged by you cutting it on him?
No, nothing, it's, it's a simple process.
But he, a commissioner in the town that gave him that direction, he followed direction from the commissioner of the town. Regardless of whether or not Jim did or didn't have the authority to give him that, he was following direction from a commissioner of the town.
I got a question for them. How did y'all put two thirty-seven in there without paperwork? Can you explain that?
That I cannot tell you, that's why I asked him repeatedly if he would bring proof of his hundred and fifty dollar deposit. When new water service is set up, we ask for proof of ownership of the property. So whoever's name is owning the property is who goes on the water bill account. If it's a renter or a leasurer, we ask for a copy of the lease agreement. We ask for a copy of the driver's license, we ask him to fill out the new account request. None of that was done, and he could not prove that he made that hundred and fifty dollar deposit. That's the receipt that we kept asking him for. We looked through everything. How it got in there, I don't know, that's the only information that was in there was his name and two thirty-seven Colridge Road. That's why I didn't get email, because it was not set up properly to start with. The first altercation that I had with him, I told him that we needed the water to be set up properly, and he told me at that time, Mandy would be in on Monday to get it all straightened out, she never came. The actual water was signed up for properly, October eighteenth of twenty-three, and he should be receiving his bills fine from there. If we had, if anything, yes, he was paying the bills for two thirty-seven, but never did he try to set it up correctly and get it going correctly until all of this started happening.
Question. If he's coming in to pay and he's repeatedly asking, and we understand that there's a problem with this system, is there not any way that in our system, we could flag the system to ask him? Can you put notes in the system to ask him for that documentation? So that when he comes in?
Numerous people that come in and say that they would like to pay their water bill because they say they didn't receive it.
Is there any way that you can put it in the system is my question?
You can put it in the system, but it's not uncommon for somebody to come in and say, I wanna pay my water bill, can you tell me what the usage was? That's not uncommon, because I would say at least half the people don't bring their bill in whenever they come to pay it, and they ask for that information at the time. So that would be astronomical thing to try to enter all of that.
You didn't, you didn't have a flag that he was not getting his bill?
He never told us anything? Because we would be inquired about the address at that time?
I'm curious as tenants being sent to, if there's not an account going under that because I mean, if he's got Oliver Street and he had livery, which they no longer.
He set it up properly.
But where was those payments being directed to is my question, looking at a year of him.
The only thing that we had in the system was his name and two thirty-seven.
But there's just no completed account set up.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you, I'm on page six, we're about halfway through. Everything else that you want to know is gonna be answered. Your question will be answered, your question, the hundred and fifty question referring to the deposit, everything's gonna get answered. So let me speed up.
Let me tell you something.
Yeah.
I represent five cities and towns, you know how long they give people time of public comment period?
Well, he's on, he's on the agenda, he's on the agenda.
He's on the agenda, they give about three minutes. They've been pretty lengthy.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but also how many times is law enforcement called out because of incompetence, miscommunication, no communication internally on town hall? I mean, these are, and, and we're, we're gonna get to a detail you might find intriguing here soon. Okay. So some of this, we're gonna go back there, I'm just gonna read through it. So as I said, I had two phone calls with her, at four thirty-eight, four forty, no mail can be delivered to the mailbox. So I stated to the town clerk that all the mail should be being returned. She told me that Ramser Post Office was understaffed and was behind, and that was the reason no mail was being returned to her location only. Because if it was being returned, then simply she should have noted, I mean, sticky note, how's this guy, you know, if you start getting multiple return bills and he's paying it, how's he coming in? The girl's at the front, it's taking a pay, sticky note. Ask him next time, we don't have something right in our system. But she said Ramser was understaffed, that was incorrect because I spoke to a nice Ramser employee, her name was Beverly, she was most helpful. She said the town clerk was, was wrong, and that Ramser was only a post office hub. All mail being delivered went through Ashboro, and she was kind enough to direct me who to speak to after, after I called that gentleman, I immediately headed to, to the city of Ashboro Post Office, and then I got the letter stating from him. I can read the letter real quick, basically, it states, first it has who the property owner is, Mandy Lewis, two thirty-seven. The United States Postal Office has, has been requesting, provided the delivery status of mail for two thirty-seven Colridge Road. Two, two thirty-seven Colridge Road, Ramser does not have a mailbox on the street, nor do they receive any street delivery via the United States Postal Service Royal Carriers. Also, two thirty-seven Colridge Road, Ramser is not associated with a rental box at Ashboro location nor the Ramser location. Any mail received for this address will be returned to sender and for having no mail receptacle available. Customer requesting information, Mandy Lewis, CEO Richard Langley, forty-six, it's got my correct address. Thank you for using the postal service sincerely, Anthony, I can't pronounce his last name, customer service supervisor, Ashboro. So this is telling me that there is mail being returned only to Ramser, I know this now for a fact. But nothing is there, so. Or the town clerk said there, there's nothing being returned. Okay, and the second phone call that I had with the town clerk, it was unjust that I was penalized for tampering and late fees since no one contacted me to let me know about disconnect. This was just unjust. How was I supposed to know that Jason had been out evaluated the usage and deemed that it was not the town's fault? Jason even stated it's not his job to tell me. That's, that's not part of his, he wasn't supposed to inform me. I also explained the high water usage, which led me to not make containment on August second. I went in on August second. That's when all this transpired, my G I S on my phone shows me there, everything. I'll skip over some of this here because that's just irrelevant. Also, in this phone call, the second phone call, I noted that the water was high, the usage, et cetera, I asked her what the median was, she didn't know what the average median for a home in Ramser is. I asked her how long she'd been doing, she said three years. In this phone call, she noticed that a deposit was not in the system. She asked how, how was it paid? I told her, that was a year ago, I have to research it. I mean, I got five businesses, tons of receipts, most everything I run through cards that's designated each business, but in the very beginning, it, it just didn't happen that way because it was unsure, you know, was it even going to be need for tax purpose? I did go to the Randolph County Sheriff's Department to obtain the body cam footage on August eighteenth. I was given incident report, but, but was informed that they did not respond, Ramser Police is the one that handled the call. I did not think Ramser Police had body footage, so I was, so I was advised by my legal counsel, just stay out of town hall, just correspond with emails moving forward, don't deal with the situation. And that was where I was at after August eighteenth. I had an issue, I did use email regarding the town hall and get confirmation regarding the issue with fence. And so then moving on, there was a phone call from the town clerk. After that, the service to be switched over, Mandy replied back, we need time to research the deposit, and then we reached back out, because honestly, we didn't want to lose the deposit that we'd already paid, and service shares being, I'm in the system, guys. So on August seventeenth, I haven't looked at footage from this board, but I assume this board made the ruling that two thirty-seven Colridge Road be disconnected from service. That led to town clerk calling Mandy at eight-thirty A M, stating that a board meeting was held, not for, and the service was to be disconnected, she'd have to come in and take out new service. By this action was forced to come into town hall. So everything became back present. When we entered, Carol would not see us enter, there was a little bit of miscommunication because I noted with Diane later that day, the phone system was messing up. So in the phone call, they were going in and out. Diane said that she heard other complaints later that day, but they became a difference on what town clerk said to Mandy. Mandy thought she said two thirty because phones kept in and out regardless. We went down at eight-thirty to resolve it. Town clerk seems to have an issue with, or not an issue, but it was commented on about Mandy saying two thirty, and that was the reason why. No profanity was used, no yelling, I proceeded to ask her questions, I just wanted to know what was going on. Carol proceeded to say that she didn't have to answer my question, she was not going to argue and fill out the paperwork or we would not have service moving forward. We were trying to get answers of what actually happened, we worked, because in prior, we've been accused of illegal activity, we're just trying to get information. I asked, what information do you have? Or what do you need for me to continue service? And this is where I spoke about renters and I can provide documentation. I was asking, what do you need from me? I can prove all this shit, I can prove anything you want to know. She said that she was not arguing with me, and that's when she walked away, she pushed the panic alarm. I didn't even know she did that. I then proceeded, because it bothered me greatly when I'm trying to speak to someone and gather information, and they end up not complying, not wanting to give me any information, this is her office, this is what her job should be. So I, I, then I responded, I said, who's your supervisor? Who's over you? There's always somebody over everybody. And, and then that's because I want to address this. And so, let me jump back in. So then that's when Chief Presley showed up shortly, followed by Captain Jessup, they both had body cams on. I still do not know why she pushed the panic alarm, why did she push the panic alarm? I mean, we're just trying to gain information. There's no weapons, not threatening, I mean, I was speaking as I'm speaking to you guys, my normal man. She, I don't understand why she didn't be rational and deal with me, and I've been a paying client who's just seeking information on what happened. Next, Chief Presley started asking the exact same questions we were asking. When he asked, is Richard Langley in the system, the answer was yes. When he asked, what address, two thirty-seven Colridge Road was replied, well, I'm in the system. At that time, he excuses himself to call J C Public Works. Chief then asked Jason, or excuse me, I said Jason, J C Public Works. Chief then asked Jason to come in to clear this up, and that's why I appreciate the chief, he brought clarity. This could simply have happened in any other prior time, but no one was helping. So when Jason came in the town hall, basically I'm stating that how did I get in the system? I got in the system because I filled out the information and followed the protocols. But when asked, where is my customer signup form from town hall, there's no record, there's nothing in there, and these ladies have stayed the same. I can't even explain that. Jason arrives, he acknowledges what's going on, he acknowledges issue. He then, he then tells me, and all this is on body cam, he tells me that he had been out to research the usage and deemed it not on the city. And it wasn't his job to communicate that to me. And here lies the problem, he investigated, but he didn't tell me. Town hall never reached out to me, not written, not verbal, nothing. Body cam footage, I, I did see something that was incorrect, they said they reached out to me twice. And Debbie would be the one that would have to answer that, she made that, how'd she reach out to me? I mean, as you guys, and I apologize for the earlier calls, I have alarms, other things that call me. My phone is twenty-seven, twenty-four, twenty, I mean, twenty-four seven leased. I do not miss anything. If I didn't have signal, a voicemail would be there. So no one reached out to me to tell me it's being researched, it's found that it's not on the city's fault, and that I owe the bill. If I had been told that, I wouldn't like it, but okay, I get it, I'll pay the bill and move on. The only reason I didn't pay when I went in because Debbie, off of the conversation that was had, she said just wait, which that's actually what should have happened with the usage going from two hundred up to thirty-five. As I explained, I've already, I didn't think there was any body cam footage, so I wasn't going to try beating a dead horse and prove something. But now I knew there was body cam. Because after Captain Jessup came in, I asked the chief and him, I said, you guys, you know, there was no body cam. And Chief, or Captain Jessup said, yes, there is. Okay then, I want to see this, I want to see what's on. So. That's, I just went over all that. In the chief's words, he came there to deescalate the situation, but the evidence started looking different to him, or just different than he prior thought. Mandy came in and stated that service was going to be disconnected in her name. I said, fine, check with him, truck, go get it, sign this up, we'll deal with this later. I should not have been charged the twenty dollars in the first late penalty, the fifty dollar in late penalty, because no one notified me of Jason's ruling or whatever, fines. And then a hundred and fifty for tampering, no, I had permission, I had, I had, was not, excuse me, I did not, was not using the term permission. I had been told to do that, that's what I thought was acceptable, and that's what I had done. As far as going in to cut the water on and off. Never did I tamper, never did I mess with a water meter, never did I do anything of that nature. We left town hall, and then I just wanted more information to prove my innocence. And then I went back in and seen, I requested also on ten eighteen that I get more documents to prove basically, because I supposedly had been told verbally, I had been warned numerous times on August eighteenth, the day of the disconnect. on August 18th, the day of the disconnect from your town clerk. And I knew that wasn't so. So then Diane was gracious, she went back through, she pulled up the documents or everything that Ransor had on me. There was nothing in there, there was nothing other than what she had said. Moving on, the only thing that was in there, she stated was, you know, Oliver Street, 71421 and a master sheet for that.
Was there a deposit made for Oliver Street?
Yes ma'am.
There was one that was and one that wasn't.
So we have Oliver Street, Liberty Street and Coleridge Roads, correct?
Yes ma'am. Yeah.
So Oliver Street was a house in the corner?
Yes ma'am.
I'm not familiar with which house on Liberty Street.
Liberty House that was, it's been sold.
Yeah, it's been sold, it was remodeled and sold two years ago.
Yes, Oliver Street, there was a deposit made and a refund was sent to him whenever the service was discontinued of $53.60.
Correct, yeah. The owed amount, you know, subtract the deposit. I agree with that. So like I said, on August 20th, I wanted to get my payment information on 237 and water usage. Diane printed, Diane had that printed off, she gave to me to provide. She explained that she couldn't work for a limited amount of hours.
Richard, I understand where you're coming from completely and, and you've done a lot, you've done your homework and I know you did, you stayed up late preparing this. My question is to say, time and face, what is it you're asking? What is it you're asking from us? What is it that you are asking for this board to do? In your eyes, that's, that's what I would like to ask.
Okay, I'll answer that. Simply, I shouldn't have been charged the 20 penalty, I shouldn't have been charged the 50 penalty and I shouldn't have been charged 150. I owe that back to me because I paid my bill on time every month leading up to that. Second, the water leak issues is resolved now. I want my second driveway fixed. And that's it, guys, that's it. But there's one document that I have an issue with. The letter that was given to me on August 18th by a town clerk of the disconnect. And that's where I've been warned numerous times, it was verbally said to me, it was my second offense. Let me just jump to the document, I did not want to miss the.
I want to say something on that. I had told Richard in 2020 when I first came back and you may remember this, that he was not supposed to tamper with the meter or turn the meters on and off.
You're referring to?
Back in 2020 on Liberty Street.
Liberty Street, yes ma'am, okay. So, and I mentioned this to you. The, and there was adjustments that you gave to me for Liberty. Where that comes in is McIntosh was over, I was remodeling the house. The house we're talking about is the second house that seemed to cross over on Liberty Street. I got in touch with him and as a courtesy, you know, if I wanted to test a bathroom or something, it would get cut on and cut off. So then this occurred, Mark was out as well, this occurred. So then whenever, the water was never cut on, never left on, never on for days, nothing of that nature. It was being a test because that house has five bedrooms, two back, two and a half backs. So as things were getting tested, it was being cut on and cut off. That house had been vacant for quite some time too, once again. So you, you are correct, you reached out to me.
Yes.
And I said, if I owed for that, I will come now. I went and.
And we, we decided that he did, we just took off the charges.
Took off the store charges.
Yeah, but I had told you, but I had told you at that point that really it gets allowed to turn the meter on and off.
I, I do not recall that and that's where, I mean, I wasn't cutting it on and off. I mean, I, Jim.
Yeah, we had that conversation and you said you didn't, that's why we took the fees and stuff up at that point.
Right, so I did, as I just, I did, Jim was involved in that. And Debbie even told me, another contractor mentioned to me, she said, Richard, you didn't have to sign up for service on 237. He said, they were done a courtesy cutting it on and off. This happened two months after I had service and I said something to Debbie, she said, well, you didn't ask. I said, well, I didn't know that. But anyway, service was already established, so I just continued on. So let's, let's jump into this, the letter that was saved on 18th, town clerk. Okay, so here we go. It's dated August 18th, that was the day I went in. It says, on August 16th, our Public Works Department turned off the water due to non-payment at 9:30 a.m. Town of Ransour Utilities Director went to your location at 2:05, discovered a sprinkler system was on. Therefore, $150, second offense, has been charged to your account for meter tampering. As per North Carolina statutes, reconnect etcetera, etcetera. Missing the fines could be in force etcetera. Okay, so that was given to me and this is where I was like, second offense, I never had a first offense. And then she verbally states she gave me numerous warrants. I never met her until then, how can she give me warrants? Well, this is where I have a very, a very, and Diane even saw this when I'm obtaining the information that Diane had printed off to me before I jumped to this, let me show you this, guys.
So on 16th, I had seen the cutoff list that one. Knew the address was on there, I knew it got cut off and now I'm sorry about that one. I drove by the property, head back to the water plant at 205, the sprinkler system was on. I didn't have a cutoff reach on my truck at the time. I called the guys that were cutting meters off to come back out that day and cut the meter back off that day. On Friday the 18th, so two days later, I drive by the house again, sprinkler system was on again. I called Diane, I said, hey, you know, have they had the bill? And then she says, no, they have not. That was when Diane called Jessup to go out there, meet with me, we cut the meter off again. So, you know, it's not uncommon, when we have a cutoff list, we don't go up on everybody's door in August, hey, we're cutting the water off. You know, we, we don't do it. You know, this wasn't the first one that month. We had had a similar issue over on Curver Street earlier in the month that they had actually taken the register off the meter.
That's tampering.
So, anyway, so two times within three days, we had to go by and cut the water back off after we had them been out. Directly, we, we made three trips to the property to cut the water off.
And I would agree with what Jason stated. I did not know the water's being cut off. Because I'm still going back to the day of the second when I was in and someone was supposed to let me know that what the outcome was from Jason going out and evaluating, which he did evaluate, it was on, it wasn't on the town side. No one told me and I've stated, anytime I was needing water, I was going in cutting it on and off so that we'd not fill up and cause contaminants to come out of the meter box and go into the home. So I, I, I didn't know. I mean, it wasn't like I was hiding behind a tree and I saw them, you know, come out and cut it off and I ran and cut it back. I didn't know, Jason. And I mean, and that's been proven.
So the, the first trip I made out there, you told me that the reason that you had been cut it off and all was because you had leaks inside the house that you were repairing. You told me you were a contractor, a contractor, which is not uncommon that when we have a contractor working on a house, contractor or plumber would tell them that, hey, you, you know, if you're fixing a leak, you can cut the meter on and see if you got the leak fixed, which is not uncommon. So when you said you had leaks in the house that you were working on, you wasn't staying there, you were in and out, that we wouldn't be there. So you, you told me that's why you were cutting it on and off. And then, you know, then we drive by, the sprinkler system running.
Yeah, the, the part of the sprinkler system, that's when I didn't know. Now what, Jason, you're, this is the point I have to broaden up with you and I'll bring it up with J.C. now. Either one of you guys know about the Venturi effect on underground plumbing?
Yeah, so our water system at any point, so the water plant being far, far away, when our ROs pumps off, we had 95 pounds PSI. You know, that water system is pressurized all the time. If it ever drops below 40 PSI, actually 20, if it drops below 25 PSI, we have to send out more water notices for backflow. The state of the land acknowledges that if that pressure, if the system pressure is above 25 PSI, that nothing can backflow into the pipe. So the, that's impossible in the meter. And if it was possible, the rainwater that fills up all the meter pits every time we get heavy rains, the water would be getting sucked up into the meters. It, it don't happen because the system is pressurized.
The meter would have to be leaking, the meter would have to have a leak for it to suck into the meter. And also they'd have to be a leak present for that to occur.
There's small leaks all over town though in our pipes.
Agree. I, I will.
But what he's saying is there was a leak in his pipe and he just wanted to ensure that the water didn't come back into his house.
The contaminant, contaminated water that's in the meter box, I did not want to go in because you guys seen the picture of what it was.
Did he, did he say he's afraid that the water in the meter box will get sucked into the pipe?
Right, and now there is a fine line and this takes a whole nother discussion. As I say, a small leak, now you said 95 pounds, you're telling me there's 95 pounds going into the house and every house?
I didn't say every house, but.
Then he can't be able to walk hard lines.
Now, you're looking at the water plant, this is coming off a 12 inch line.
Yeah, I can look.
So your, your line feeds off a 6 inch line to a 3 quarter inch.
Right.
There's plenty of pressure on that line.
I, I agree.
And with the, the system being pressurized, pressurized, it's not a suction system. There's no way that water can get sucked back into the.
So actually it could in the right situations after the leak.
I think this is getting down to a tit for tat kind of scenario and we're going to summarize this real quick, okay? Because this is getting a little bit out of control and we're going to dial it back.
So back to the question that was asked about the, I received no mail. So I've been told there's no mail that's been returned to the city of Ransour. Well, guess what? All of these, there's six of them that Diane discovered on my, the final information that she gave to me, she gave these to me. So along the, along the way, we have 614, 2023, 13, 12, 13, 2022, January 23, February 23, March 23, May 23. So she gave these to me at that time. And.
Can I see those?
Yes.
I would like to request all documentation be brought together and sent to us at the next meeting so that we can examine this further and not take up any more time. If that's okay, if you guys can provide that for us as much information is there that can be found and the lack in of, we'll work it out. But we're going to have to take the time, nothing's going to be sat down and resolved tonight. I wouldn't want it to be resolved tonight at a pace.
And there's a lot of information.
But I would like for us to have that documentation on both counts.
And, and also you're not going to get the correct letter that was given to me on August 18th. You're going to get the one that she has changed, which is her signature on the town's letters. And this was a legal letter, I, I take it being a legal letter where I was buying monetary fines that she went in and changed. The reason I suspect she changed because it didn't add up what I was being fined for versus what the facts were.
Well, I think there's a logic. Any letter, first offense is $150, if it had been second offense, it would have been $300 according to our fee schedule.
Diane, I ask you, how did the one that I paid, I'd paid $5.75 to get this information? Why is there discrepancy today and ask?
And I don't, I can't tell you why, there is.
And we asked for a copy of the letter where he says that it says second offense and he refused to give it to us.
Oh no, let me, let me state that.
He held it up to the glass.
I held it to the glass because I said, I do not trust anything on that side of this glass. That copier's not going to eat this document, nothing else because this shows, this shows changes was made.
But that's not how you conduct. Well, see, I was just like, the information to provide to show whether the negligence on either party is involved so that we can kind of clarify this and correct it. I mean, it's simple, it's, it's, it's not rocket science.
That's exactly what I've said the whole time, this is simple, I shouldn't even be.
But the LGC has rules, we can't just give a refund and there's state law on that.
And see, J.C., after, because I didn't know why you didn't when I introduced myself.
Because it wasn't, it wasn't the time and place.
I get how, I learned how cities.
Yeah, it was Fall Festival, I was in Fall Festival mode because that was going on and so it was not the time, place to discuss business.
Me, as far as a business, if there's an issue like this, I, I'll take time to address it no matter what is going on, that's the difference. But I understood the city works a lot more complex, which makes it very difficult for me to let you guys know what is actually happening.
You could have called and made an appointment, we'd have met you down here any night.
I didn't know, I didn't know you until I saw you, so, okay, so how, how do we proceed?
I personally would like to have more information provided from you guys and then settle it until the next month's meeting. I mean, and obviously, and J.C. is correct, LGC is very firm on the fact that they are not backing us on refunding.
They're the local government commission.
There's a difference between refund and mistake and whatnot. In this point, we need to prove that there was a mistake made.
And then a month, can you look on your credit cards and see where that deposit was paid?
Okay, so I have looked, like I said, I gained information the easiest and worked my way in. So in the very beginning, I, I got a card now that's all I use for that location. Beginning, I think I had cash on me from one of my rentals and that's how I paid. But it still goes back in the system, I was in the system.
Well, from what I've told somebody about you being in the system, it was in, the, the water meters are read by radio or computer, so it probably detected a, a usage. And it just came, and that's how it might have got been in there.
It was cut on, I signed up for service and it was cut on. And that's where the detective, no.
Well, if we just, like, like Joey, Joey gets, if we can get all the documentation, let's look at it.
I mean, if you can provide, and I'm not just asking for you guys to provide your proof, I need you to do it. I need to provide proof from your statements, from your, your, whether you paid through check, whatever, your bank account. I want proof as for that record for that previous year, because she can get it with purchase on me. But I'd like for you to also provide that to us.
So you want me to show where I paid all of those?
All those bills.
Not a problem, that's easy.
Because if we can get all these together, I think that.
And the original $150 deposit that he's never been able to prove that he made?
I have looked for it, guys, I mean, like I said.
That's why I said, I feel like if we all have time to gather the correct information that's needed for us to come back to the table, I think it would be better for us to do that.
I agree and the, and I'll, I'll go through and take time to look, but I mean, gosh, this is a small amount of money and I got a lot of other things rolling.
Well, see, that's, that's what I'm looking at, you know, for you, $220 in squat. And we appreciate you guys investing in the town of Ransour. We are not looking at you saying, no, we don't want you here or anything like that. This is just a situation that has arisen, kind of blew up a little bit that shouldn't have. But we, but we need to get all the information back together and then us come right back together and, and discuss further. Do we agree with that? Is everybody cool with that?
I'm fine with it.
Are you going to stay here another 15, 20 minutes on this topic and get my work?
Well, quite honestly, I'd like to be involved in this and I know next month I turned over the keys, so I'd like to be on next month's agenda and under new business.
Yep, and then also, I mean, I wasn't going to bring it up in this meeting.
It can't be on new business, it's old business.
I think board needs to have more information concerning the fence that was erected. I think there's a lot of confusion going on there. This is my last sentence, I know that there was complaints that was given, but how many compliments was given? Maybe none to the board, but I could pack these seats, a lot more compliments was given from citizens on how we have improved various things, fence included. So I, I want to come back to that and there's a recent amendment that was, I read, was drafted where I, I do not agree with town hall being able, citizens can't put fences up. I mean, the main reason we put fence up was people's parking lot.
That'll be a hearing that you'll have to come back and talk to, yeah, we'll have a hearing on that.
Sorry for my misunderstanding, okay.
Yeah, we'll just contact Carol and let them know that we're going back to that on this in the agenda next month. We want to get back to that call.
So Carol's the only contact that I got to get back. I mean, I prefer nothing against Diane, I've had nothing but good communication with her.
No, if, if you feel.
If you're a business person and you conduct yourself in the right way, you can talk to Carol and she's over this office.
She pushed the panic alarm on me, man, because she could not communicate with me.
Richard, what, you're comfortable speaking with Brandy?
Richard, you can call me if you'd like.
Sounds great, thank you ladies. Thank you for your time. Hopefully I did okay for my first time. Sorry I was long, but there's a lot of information.
All right, thank you. Place of fire?
We have nothing.
Museum, library, cemetery, archer rat. Administration.
Look, audit update.
Yes, ma'am. Some, some of the folks here was on the Wooten Call on Tuesday, and I gave, I gave this to them then, whenever John asked about the audit update. So it'll be a repeat to those already heard. I was, I inquired with Ed Carroll, our auditor, uh, uh, to get a progress report on the audit. His reply was, as soon as Joe says you have an auditable trial balance for twenty-one, which he's been working on all of that, I will get started. Hopefully, it will be in December. Hopefully, once we get through that year, it should go smoother, because you got to have one year established to go on to the next. Uh, I did speak with Mr. Haney, Joe, who he's referring to. I did not speak with him. I had email correspondence with him, and he wants to come back and meet in person again. He has a couple more questions, and we're working on a date to do that. So we are working diligently to get the, the audit done. Go on to the next one.
Yeah.
The essentials of municipal government is, is being held, this is a class that I think has been held across the state for years, from what I understand. This year, they are offering it in Greensboro, which is the closest, as I understand, that it's ever been to Ramser. It's been a further places away that it has been offered. It's also being offered in Wilmington, Rockland, Ashford, Chapel Hill, but it's, it's also in Greensboro. Uh, as you know, the newly elected officials, even though that you were already here and have already taken the ethics class, Teresa and J C is on speaking to on that, even though you've already took it when you're newly elected, you have to retake it again. And so plus the, the commissioner-elect and the mayor-elect. Essentials of mu- municipal government is, it includes the mandatory ethics training. Uh, it, it is recommended. I know a lot of boards, from what I understand from speaking with other clerks and treasurers across the state, a lot of boards send their entire board to this training, uh, just to read what it's about. Essentials of municipal government.
Carol, I'm just saying, because Happy and Jay aren't here, do you want to go ahead and approach that?
We have to vote on it because it's going to cost.
Oh, well, it's going to cost. Anyway, I, I'll skip that since we've had such a long time. It is recommended also that clerks might attend this with, with the elected officials. Bottom line on it all, it is three hundred and fifty dollars per person. We did receive, I was filling out the paperwork to get reimbursement for this year's required training that we had to do as being a distressed utility. As you remember, we had a two thousand dollar grant that the money was not given to us. We have to submit receipts, and then they give us a reimbursement. So I asked the lady on that if the remaining, because that money ends in April of next year. I asked her if the remaining of that money could be used for this essentials for municipal government. It can be. She said that she wished that every town was, would spend every penny that they got to the very last penny. Bottom line of the grant is, was two thousand dollars. The first required training that we had is five hundred and four. What I sent in for the second required training that we had was three hundred and forty-seven. So we should have one thousand, one forty-eight, fifty remaining in that grant money. If we had six attendees going to this, assuming that they would go, if we had six attendees going to this essentials of municipal government at three hundred and fifty dollars, that would be two thousand, one hundred dollars minus the one thousand, one forty-eight, fifty from the grant would leave nine hundred, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty cent that we'd have to take from budget to train six attendees, which I think would be very valuable training, and we do have that in travel and school under admin because, as you know, the travel and school for admin also includes commissioners, mayor, as well as office employees.
Carol, do you know if this is one of the classes that was taken, I mean, last year, because if it is, I would eliminate it and take me off.
Essentials was a different class.
Joy, because she were not elected, the, the ones would be mayor-elect, spy the commissioner-elect, Toby, uh, J C, and Teresa, and then Debbie and I would like to attend to your also. It's, I know Diane Brower last year, I think it was last year. Anyway, whenever she took the ethics training, she tried to see if this class was offered on Zoom. We worked and worked trying to see that, and it's, it's not offered on Zoom. And this is a joint effort between N C L M and school government.
I just think that's probably a new board vote.
We've got to register.
When do you have to register?
Uh, we need to.
The class is January eleventh.
Yeah, I don't think we, we.
The registration.
It'll fill up.
Well, this is mandatory, correct?
You have to pay.
But you can do the ethics.
The essentials class is extremely good for all commissioners. It's something that I would encourage every commissioner and mayor to go back through.
I'd like to make a motion if the commissioner and the, the elected officials want to go, we go ahead and sign them up. If they want to, and use the grant money.
See, I have a first and second.
I'll have to find out if I can get off work for two days.
Is there any further discussion?
Please, do this for two days? It, it, it could be, I don't know, how many days is it?
Two days, January eleventh.
It's eleven and twelve. I think you put it on your calendar, Teresa, to see what you could do. I believe it's a Thursday and Friday.
I also looked into it, Chapel Hill and they, or if it was an issue. Seemed like it says something about online or Zoom, if it, connection, if you couldn't make.
Chapel Hill does say this course is also available online.
Yeah.
I did not see that. Yes, ma'am.
So, but I mean, I want to take it.
The price would still be three hundred and fifty dollars.
Regardless, but just putting that out there, if it was an issue.
Could do it online.
Yeah, and is it two days still, even if it's in Chapel Hill?
Chapel Hill, it's February twenty-two, twenty-three. All day, dinner on the ground, is that what you're saying?
Is there any other further discussion on that? All in favor? Okay, request for public hearing?
Yes, there's two items that have come before the planning and zoning board, and they have approved it and now are requesting a public hearing so that it can come before the government board. That's, J Matt Properties, they would like rezoning and annexation of some property here in town. And the government board requesting, requested changes to the town, one of the town ordinances that was requested in September. I sent all of that out to you, Brandon, had made some suggestions. And so that would need a public hearing also in order to pass that. So it's just a request for the two public hearings.
You want to do this at the next meeting?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, public hearing at the December meeting.
Is everybody good with that?
Make a motion. We set these public hearings for December meeting.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Who was serving, I'm sorry.
I also like to make a motion until we hear the fence ordinance that we put a stay on all fence requests until after the ordinance.
I think you have to, I think you have to get notice on that. I'm sixty D now. They don't let you do a moratorium without giving a notice.
Give who notice?
Probably. Hang on a minute. Keep, keep going. They changed that, basically.
Well, we've got just our reminders, and then we're going to take a break for closed session.
And we can come back out and open and do that, you know, take a break. I'll make a motion. We take a break to go into the close.
Make that motion.
All in favor? That's for personnel and legal.